I would like to introduce the panelists for the third session from the UK, the Royal Institute of International Affairs, Mr. Hans Kundanani, the Director of the European Programme. Welcome, Hans.
Thank you for having me.
And to all representatives of the think tanks from 10 countries, please continue to participate to the extent possible. Yasushi Kuro will moderate the third session. Thank you. It's 11:00 PM, quickly approaching 12:00 PM in Japan, but this is the most important topic in a way. It's about international order on the verge of death. How to revive that? With overlapping, of course, topics with session one, but with the goal of developing that topic. And it's a complex issue as well. Prime Minister Kishida mentioned, addressed in his video speech, that we are at a historical turning point, where the question is whether the international order can be protected. International order is on the brink of extinction. How do we revive it? In terms of integrity of sovereignty and territory, the mechanism for ensuring that integrity must be restored as well and protected. For this session, we welcome Mr. Joshi from India, Mr. Greco from Italy, and Mr. Kundanani. And also Mr. Leal from Brazil, Carlos. Mr. Rohinton hasn't spoken much either. I would like to ask first Mr. Joshi, Mr. Greco, and Mr. Kundanani to speak in turn for about eight minutes each. Mr. Joshi, if you're ready.
Yeah, I was muted. Thank you so much, Kudo-san. It's always a pleasure being with colleagues at the General Institute. And like all others, I'm extremely sorry that we could not make it. We tried very hard, but we could not make it to join you in Tokyo. This is a very important time, of course, where you're having this discussion. And the first two sessions have really been very vibrant, very illuminating. Really thank all the participants for what we've heard on this. You know, we are talking about what is to be done to revive the disintegrating international order. Some would have said it's already disintegrated. There's no international order to revive anymore. And the international order died in the last week of February. The developments in Ukraine have surprised and shocked everyone, you know, by the sheer rapidity with which they moved and the war actually escalated. And as I said before in the morning, when we were speaking, that both sides seem to have been trapped within their own worst insecurities. Now, how do we get out of here? We need to get back. As far as India is concerned, we are alarmed. We are shocked at what has happened to the state of the international world order. We believe that we need to get it back on track. And I was asked repeatedly as to why is India not taking the stand with everybody else? And why is India amongst the ones who abstained? India has abstained. India has not voted for Russia. And you see, India's stand is very clear. It is tempered, yes, some people pointed out during the sessions. It is tempered by interests, that is correct. There are interests involved, interests you all know. First of all, yes, there is a defense. Defense interest is not as large as was made out by my Chinese committee. But yes, there is a legacy interest that exists, but that is not the main point. There is another interest that we are part of Asia. And that really underlines why we need to take the stand which we have taken. India's stand was very clear. It has been critical, extremely critical of the violation of borders and the international law. And it does not support Russia in this at all. Not only Russia, it does not support any country which tries to do that. Abstention itself is a strong statement against the partner with which it has had a relationship. And this relationship has, it maintains this relationship even as there was a direct threat to it across a border, where you had 100,000 troops lined up over the last two years, which had incidents. And yes, India was in touch with Russia over those incidents as well. So there are larger things at play. India's support for Ukraine always remains. It remains in terms of humanitarian assistance. It also remains in terms of what they are going through. This is not something we want to wish upon any country. And India is very, very clear on that. Now, we find Ukraine in the midst of a very, at the moment, at this particular moment, where things are of a very uncertain equilibrium of war, which threatens to spiral out of control. And that is dangerous. Some of the conversations we've been hearing are also pointing in the same direction, that one side is crazy, God knows what they are going to end up doing. Someone is probably, Russia has its hand on the nuclear button. There are some who would argue that Russia is holding back from using all its might on Ukraine. Others would emphasize that the Russian army has been challenged by the resistance and is all of the ordinary Ukrainians. I think both are true. Both are probably correct. And that is why I'm calling it a highly unstable equilibrium war. And I can only hope, and India only hopes, that all sides realize that they are locked in a situation where they are going to be no winners. Even if Russia were to militarily conquer Ukraine, now, holding Ukraine, holding those, you know, very patriotic people and created by its own actions, and controlling the resulting insurgency is going to be impossible. And this fear, distrust, and hatred engendered by a unilateral invasion like this is something which lasts a few generations. It is not something which a country like Russia can get over. You know, in this generation of Putin, Putin will leave a legacy which will disastrous if it thinks it can militarily conquer Ukraine and install a puppet government there. So we need to find a solution which has to restore the balance in Ukraine and ultimately reach a negotiated settlement that is acceptable to both parties. What is worrying is what had happened was a breakdown in communication between the warring parties at some point of time. There is some news, it is probably getting restored. It is getting back on track. We can only keep our fingers crossed. See, the larger question, how do we, from here, how do we restore the international order? Does it now, after the experience of Ukraine, after what we've seen, not just in Ukraine, but many other incidents, that unilateral actions by certain parties, there seems to be no way of stopping them? We are afraid of unilateral action across our border. There is no question we can support any kind of unilateral action. And there is no gainsaying, saying that this action taken by Russia against Ukraine is an attack on national sovereignty against the UN Charter. It is reprehensible, it is condemnable. It is also true that unilateralism begets unilateralism. And the attack of Ukraine has been the consequence, it's a repeated failure of the global community to rise up in one voice against such actions in the past. A rules-based order cannot survive unless that order is truly universal. And the global community has been failing in this duty for at least the last two decades. And multilateralism has been on a precipitous decline, which may be past the point of no return, and that is dangerous. The only response we've been seeing are economic sanctions, which I believe are an extremely blunt and ineffective policy tool in the face of actions like this. They impose insufficient costs on the targeted governments and many times disproportionate ones on the most vulnerable populations. And it's a kind of tool, you're letting loose a snake whose tail is in its own mouth. It is devouring itself. Sanctions work in a globalized world based on trade. The more the world gets fragmented and de-globalizes, the less effective sanctions are. And so for us, you know, if there is going to be greater fragmentation, then the weapon has lost all its power. It does not work. So there is, you know, it becomes a self-fulfilling prophecy. So at the moment, what I would say is that the path to a new world order at the moment does seem to lie, unfortunately, through a new world disorder, you know, which is being marked by increasing fragmentation. Countries are becoming more protectionist. We are seeing a fragmentation of politics. We are seeing a fragmentation of trade, fragmentation of data, communication. And this is the fragmentation which is an extremely worrying sign. And the fallout, the fallout of Ukraine, the fallout which has been immediately, which we are seeing, is probably going to see a greater emphasis on regional security architectures. You might see that it is, it is good Europe today has committed itself to spending more and assuming greater agency. That is important. Countries will perhaps need to take on greater agency in bolstering their own securities. And that is a message, I think, which goes across to countries across, whether it is Japan, whether it is South Korea, whether it is in the case of Taiwan, and countries in the Indo-Pacific as well. India has been strong always in underlining its resolve. The record itself, which was discussed, is not, as far as India is concerned, a security architect. We do not want a security architecture like NATO in our background. We are scared of. We are not sure which way it is going to go. So there is a problem there. And the countries will have to take greater agency in this world in safeguarding their own security, in safeguarding their own interests. And ultimately, we need to find a way to get back to, you know, countries starting having conversation with each other. Diplomacy has to come back. Whether it comes back through Armageddon, I hope not. Things do not escalate out of control, sense prevails. And we start restoring order in those situations, especially in Ukraine, at this particular point of time. There are countries which can intervene, should intervene, and help out to find a solution if there is a breakdown in communication which has happened. I hope, I'm keeping my fingers crossed, that things work out for the better. We do not go down the path we are scared of, we are afraid of. We do not want that situation develop. And India is willing to step in and do everything to get this structure back on its legs.
Thank you very much. Yes, it is a relief to hear what you've just said. Mr. Greco from Italy, please.
Thank you, Mr. Kuro, again for giving me the floor. First of all, a short remark on Russia-China partnership is the topic of the first guiding question. Of course, much has been said on that, but I want to say that I also doubt that China can offer Russia the economic and financial lifeline it is looking for. China seems anxious to limit collateral damages to Chinese interests and lacks among other things the technological capacity to substitute for the West. The most effective way for China to help Russia would be to invest heavily in Russia. And this would imply heavy cost that China would be probably reluctant to sustain, not to speak of the uncomfortable position in which this would place Russia, as a minor junior partner has been said several times. Second, it appears that security factors and dynamics will become increasingly crucial. We had become somewhat accustomed to the idea that economic power, economic relations were the major factors in shaping the international environment. But with the big increase in security risk and rivalries in many regions, we must review, indeed, we are reviewing this approach. Security alliances and alignments may increasingly take the precedence over economic relations and partnership. And the Western countries should be ready to renounce some economic benefits to safeguard their security. Third point, this new perspective giving more weight to security dynamics and military power does not imply that we lose sight of the need to engage in the difficult and painful process of adjusting to the tectonic shift of power in international relations towards Asia. The trend towards a relative decline of West power is likely to continue. Fourth point, Ukraine war has placed in even sharper relief the key importance of transatlantic relations, what we can term the first inner circle of the Western system. NATO countries have shown a remarkable degree of cohesion and solidarity and also the readiness to enhance the alliance that they're in posture. This encouraging sign of the solidity and effectiveness of the alliance will be put to serious test, no doubt, in the coming weeks and months. And there remain at least two big question marks. First, the accurate capacity of Europeans to strengthen their defense capacities and engage more seriously in intra-European defense integration. The second question is the solidity of the US domestic consensus around renewed transatlantic commitments, given the past reservations which manifested themselves especially during the Trump administration and the persistent political polarization on the domestic scene. Looking beyond NATO, and this is my fifth point, and beyond the transatlantic relation, what we have seen is a close alignment with West and Europe of countries such as Japan and Australia. And the G7 has acted rather effectively, I would say. But it has also become fairly clear that the Community or Alliance of Democracies Project, which President Biden attached, touches great importance, are structural limitations when it comes to address a crisis with such huge political and economic implications. A country like India, Sunjoy has explained to us, is clearly wary of this type of alignment that almost won't be beholden to any other powers, despite the brutal ties with America and the EU. And Turkey itself, as we know, has rejected calls to join US and Europe sanction. Sixth point, in any case, the geopolitical tensions with Russia and China are likely to make it increasingly difficult to cooperate with them to protect global commons and address global issues. The West effort to preserve bilateral cooperation in several fields of common interest by somewhat insulating this cooperation from the growing political, geopolitical, and security tensions has come up against many obstacles. A quite specific but telling example is the risk that the project like the International Space Station could, as we have seen, become another victim of the Ukraine war. Its fate is now in doubt. Space, outer space is one of the last remaining areas where US and Russia have continued to cooperate in principle of good effort, plenty of possibilities for common endeavors. Another example is the difficulty that due to the Ukraine war, the efforts to renew the Iran nuclear deal are experiencing. And of course, there are plenty of other examples. The ramification of the war on the process and structure of global cooperation will be huge. And they add to a number of factors that have weakened the global cooperation agenda in recent times. The negative impact on the prospect of implementing or advancing the G20 agenda will be considerable. As we have already seen under the Italy's presidency, Italy's presidency last year, Russia and China have taken a pronounced with less collaborative attitude within the G20. And then now fear that the G20 can be used to promote specific Western interests. The risk is that the deepening geopolitical and technological rivalries can prevent agreements to establish common rules, regulatory frameworks in crucial areas such as outer space, cybersecurity, and data governance, also Sunjoy has emphasized. The prospect of a war divided in different regulatory areas and a growingly fragmented world has become more concrete. Finally, one should not underestimate the ideological component of the deepening tensions with China and Russia. As we have seen in the case of both Hong Kong and Ukraine, the competition is not only a security strategic one, but also stems from competing views and models of governance. In the case of Ukraine, this was a decisive factor since Putin clearly feared the contagion effect of a democratic Ukraine integrated into the Western system. The bottom lining is that for us Europeans, transatlantic cooperation, as well as collaboration within the G7, is more crucial than ever. Although we are now, I hope, more aware of the key importance of acquiring a greater European strategic autonomy. Any opportunities to advance the global cooperation agenda should, of course, be exploited. Needless to say, we cannot afford to renounce our efforts to preserve the global framework of cooperation. But political realism suggests that we are obliged to consider more deeply and systematically the security and strategic implication of the current regional and global trends. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Next, I'd like to invite Mr. Kundanani from Chatham House. So you have the floor, sir.
Thank you very much, Kudo-san. It's really nice to be here, like everyone else. I wish I was there with you in Tokyo. I came to Japan just before the pandemic started in spring of 2020, but I haven't been able to come back since then, obviously, and I miss it. I hope I can come again pretty soon. What I will try to do is give perhaps a slightly different perspective on this question of how we revive the disintegrating international order. I heard some of the first session. I wasn't able to stay, and I didn't hear much of the second session. And I agree with a lot of what was said in the first session about defending the international order from threats, particularly from China and Russia. But in a sense, I think the way I think about this is that that's only half of the story. In the sense that I think if we do want to revive the disintegrating international order, I think we have to think not only about defending it, but also about reforming it. I think that's a sort of equally important part of how we restore order is to think about some of the mistakes that we have made, by which I mean the West, actually, in the last, I mean, particularly the last 30, 40 years since the Cold War ended. And I think actually that some of what is now happening with Russia, but also in Asia with China, this isn't, I'm not defending Chinese or Russian actions, but I do think that what China and Russia are doing is actually exposing some of the problems with the international order that we've created, actually. And I think above all, I want us to be quite precise about the order that exists or has existed, because I think often we're not very precise about this. We, you know, talk about a liberal international order often, or a rules-based international order. But I think often, we are not quite clear what we mean by that. We overlook some of the complexities involved in that. And so I'll try to get into some of those complexities. And I think what then happens is that, you know, I think, and this is really, I think, you know, since the war started, for understandable reasons, this is really now been the tendency in a lot of discussion, is to see this in very simple terms as essentially a struggle between people who believe in international order, i.e. us, and people who want to destroy it, i.e. China and Russia. I actually think that a lot of the disputes that we're having are actually more about different kinds of order, different versions of order, rather than some of us being in favor of the liberal international order and some of us being against it. And so I'll try and explain a little bit more about that. And in particular, what a lot of this will revolve around is the concept of sovereignty. Because, you know, that certainly from the part of the discussion that I heard this morning, that was very much, you know, the center of it. Territorial integrity and state sovereignty. And obviously, that's been violated by Russia. And that's then in turn seen as a threat to the international order that exists or existed. But actually, I think the relationship of the liberal international order with sovereignty and with state sovereignty is actually quite complex. And I'll try to explain some of that. So the way I think of the liberal international order is that it's complex in about four different ways. We tend to think of it as being this sort of almost monolithic thing which has existed, you know, since 1945 and sort of emerged fully formed from the Atlantic Charter or something like that. And then has kind of remained intact until very recently, at which point it became threatened, and therefore, as I say, we must defend it. Whereas I think the reality is much more complicated, as I say, in four different ways. The first way is that it's evolved over time. The order that existed in 1945 is not the order that we have now. I mean, even before the, you know, the Russian invasion. It's evolved over time. And in particular, I mean, one could get into the complexities of that evolution. But for the sake of time, I want to draw a distinction between the Cold War order and the post-Cold War order. Because it seems to me that the post-Cold War order is very, very different from the Cold War order. And in particular, it's different in relation to this question around sovereignty. The post-war liberal international order's relationship with sovereignty, state sovereignty is a completely different one than the Cold War order. And to put it very simply, state sovereignty was at the center of the Cold War order, what some people call the Yalta Order. That was very much the center of it. And I think what's happened in the post-Cold War order is that in different ways, we have actually, and when I say we, again, I mean largely Europe and the United States, rather than China or Russia, what we have done is to actually undermine state sovereignty. And I'll come back to that in a second. The second sort of dimension of complexity, I think, is that the liberal international order has different elements. So it's evolved over time, and it has different elements. And there are various different ways that you can break down the liberal international order into different elements. Again, for the sake of simplicity and the limited time that we have, I'll just break it down into three elements, which are the security order firstly, secondly, the economic order, and thirdly, the human rights order. And I won't say too much about the economic order, because, you know, given the impact of events in Ukraine, I want to focus particularly on the security order and the human rights order, which I think are very closely linked, but are also kind of at the center of what we're arguing about now, following the Russian invention. All I'll say on the economic order is that, again, that has changed dramatically from the Cold War to the post-Cold War period. The way that the economic order worked, you know, before the end of the Cold War, was much less liberal, in a sense. What's happened since the end of the Cold War is that the economic order has been liberalized. By the way, I think this is the case in the other two elements of the order as well, and I'll come back to this. But the economic order has certainly been liberalized. And this has been in the context of sort of hyper-globalization since the end of the Cold War and also the neoliberal term, which began in the 1970s. And so what we have now is a much, much more liberal order than we had before. And I happen to think, and other people have written this too, I happen to think that's a problem, that this has created all kinds of problems in, you know, in terms of particularly inequality in our societies. I think this is partly what led to some of the political turmoil that we've seen in Europe and the United States in the last few decades. And so I think there's a long discussion to be had there about how you fix that. But let me, as I say, focus on more on the security order and the human rights order. I think, very briefly, it's also important to say, this would be my third kind of dimension of the complexity, which is that the liberal international order has functioned very differently in different parts of the world. You know, it looks different in Europe than it does in Asia, particularly when we talk about security order. This has come up, I think, already in your discussions, that, you know, European security order is very different from the Asian security order. Sunjoy was just making this point in relation to, you know, you have collective defense centered on NATO has been the way in which the European security order has been organized. That's obviously not the case in Asia. It's been much more of a hub-spoke model centered on bilateral security guarantees between the United States and individual countries. And also, in particular, in the post-Cold War period, the security order in Europe developed in a very different way. I'm thinking here of the Paris Charter and so on. So I think, you know, what I think Russia has challenged is in particular the European security order, rather than something broader than that. And then finally, the fourth dimension of the sort of complexity is that, you know, when we say liberal international order is liberal, it's really not clear what that means. And it can mean liberal in, I think, at least three different senses. Is this political liberalism that we're talking about? Is it economic liberalism, which, you know, again, in the economic order, that's clearly part of it? Or is it liberalism in the international relations? Or is it liberalism in the international relations sense? In other words, as opposed to realism or other theories of international relations? In other words, you can imagine a sort of realist international order as opposed to a liberal international order. So, you know, that's all a very long way of saying this is all very, very complex. And it's not simply a case of order versus no order. There are all kinds of different ways in which the order can exist. Let me then just, just come to the, the, the main point in a way that I wanted to make around, around security order and the human rights order. Because I think it's really important to, to, to point out, even at this moment, when it's quite difficult to say this, that the security order and the human rights order, it does seem to me that the West has created some of the problems with which we are now dealing. And what I mean by that is that in the post-Cold War period, both in the security order and the human rights order, what we essentially did was to qualify the principle of sovereignty, which had dominated the international order up to that point. And, you know, in the security order, you can see very clearly how we did that. I'm thinking particularly here of Kosovo, you know, which Putin mentions. He obviously caricatures this when he mentions it, but I think there is a small grain of truth in what he says about, about Kosovo, which is that NATO did carry out a military intervention against Serbia in 1999 without a UN Security Council mandate. In other words, it broke the rules. Now, it did so because it thought that there was a much more important consideration than maintaining the rules, which was that a genocide was happening. One can argue about whether that was the right thing to do or not, but I think we do have to say that we actually set a precedent there by, by, you know, violating the sovereignty of Serbia and in that sense, breaking the rules. And I think the other thing we have to admit, after Kosovo, at least, not to mention some of the, the subsequent conflicts that took place, is that it becomes quite difficult after Kosovo to say that NATO is a purely defensive alliance. You know, that, 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 I think, was, was, was the effect of Kosovo. And then similarly, you know, this is very connected as well to the human rights order, because we did a whole series of things in relation to human rights that, again, undermined the sort of unqualified nature of, of sovereignty, which had been central to the international order up to that point. And I'm thinking here particularly of things like the International Criminal Court, but also, again, you know, the concept of, of the responsibility to protect and humanitarian intervention, of which Kosovo was an example. This was undermining the principle of sovereignty. So, I mean, really, all I want to say is that I think, as we think about how we revive this disintegrating order, we have to think about some of those mistakes. I think we have to be honest with ourselves about some of those mistakes we've made. And I think we do have a little bit of a choice between, you know, what kind of order we want. Is it to go back to the Cold War order where state sovereignty is absolute? Or do we want to continue with this more liberal order, which I, which I think actually does create instability, even if there are other reasons for doing it? I'll stop there.
Hi.
Thank you very much for that input. We are running out of time. So let me quickly turn to the three panelists. If there are any questions or comments, in other words, for the three panelists, but we also want to hear from Rahinton as well. And Carlos, I think you had a PC problem. I do want to make sure that Carlos gets a turn, but Rahinton, please go ahead.
Kudo-san, thank you. I've been so listening carefully to what colleagues have been saying. And I have, I guess, two or, let me, let me make remarks in three sets. And again, in the spirit of what the others are saying, I think this is not about blaming the victim. On the other hand, context and history matter. And I think through the morning, my morning at least, we've heard a number of instances in which the situation now is the result of conscious decisions that several countries have taken, not just Russia and the Ukraine. But I, I would begin with the point that Russia's miscalculation, epic as it might be, might be the result of how the West has reacted in the past to what Russia has done. It has, the tactics that we now decry, attacking journalists, attacking hospitals, all of that, were test-driven, and the armaments were test-driven in other parts of the world. Oligarchs. I think after Russia, Ukraine must be the country that is at least as corrupt and, and has oligarchs. And, and that holds of Russian political economy that we now worry about is the result of a flawed liberalization that goes back to the fall of the Berlin Wall and the split of the Soviet Union. And that's the flawed privatization that bred oligarchs and bred, or nourished authoritarianism as opposed to liberalism, in some ways, is the result of a twenty, thirty-year sequence that we're now seeing have come to play. And so my first point, when we talk about rebuilding the international order, is to put some specificity to what we heard from our colleague from the UK, which is, let's, let's be sort of clear on how we might move forward. Now, none of this will help in the short run. I have no views, because I'm not a security analyst, on what will happen the next six weeks or the next six months. But suppose I said to you that rather than freeze accounts, that we had more concrete governance around money laundering. Maybe that's the way forward, so that we wouldn't have this kind of situation in which we welcome dirty money in our real estate markets and in our financial systems in the first place. And then we celebrate unity by sort of acting on it piecemeal. This is not a Russia oligarch problem. Time and again, leaks like the Panoply Papers have shown that corruption in many countries is something that breeds on itself. There have been proposals made to improve on our current highly imperfect money laundering system. There are vested interests at play, and I think this would be a good wake-up call for the global community to act on capital flows and money laundering. I'd make the same point about energy transitions. I'd make the same point about cybersecurity, and I'd make the same point about digital platform governance. Sanjay mentioned how we were seeing fracturing in different kinds, and in this forum and others, I've made the point in the past, that in fact, data governance, while we may not, may not see eye to eye currently, it is one of those Bretton Woods, San Francisco-type problems that is a global governance challenge. And we're only going to get at information and misinformation through that mechanism, rather than sort of doing tit-for-tat information and misinformation wars. Second point, I'd underline what the German ambassador said at the outset, which is there's a longer-term governance and development agenda that we ignore at our peril. And climate change and pandemics are certainly part of that. One reason, I think that we saw the kind of, some people would say disappointing vote in the UN, is that many countries are not convinced that there's something in it for them by signing on to the current global governance system. And so this brings me to my third set of observations on China. I guess I'd begin, as some of you have, that China and Russia are not the same. The Chinese development model, which can also be criticized, is actually for real. China has pulled out more people out of poverty in less time than any other country in history. And many developing countries see that. They did not see that in the model of the former Soviet Union, and they certainly don't see it in current Russia, where in fact, until recently and perhaps even now, life expectancy has been falling. And anthropometric measures of human well-being, like height and weight, have been going in the wrong directions. And so it is a mistake, although I get what all the security people say, to sort of compare Russia and China, and therefore Ukraine and Taiwan. I see some similarities, but I think the underlying issues are much different, and you're dealing with a completely different set of historic and economic issues when it comes to China. China, you know, has its own set of grievances, some of which are legitimate. I'd go back to the failed, or I should say mishandled, reform of the IMF. The way in which most countries treated the creation of the AIB, the creation of the PPP as an anti-China bulwark, and then the elevation of anti-China rhetoric, which has become mainstream in many countries. And so I, I say that because China does have more of an interest in the global system than Russia does. China is more constructively plugged into globalization than Russia. And so I'll end on this point, that if you want to create a new sort of international order, there's some specific things to which I mentioned at the outset. But I do think that in this case, China is a linchpin in the sense that if we could tweak in the medium run some of the processes of globalization in a way that countries see the, the equation of belonging in it much more positively, and China is a very good example, then I don't think we'll quite see the fractionalization that we're seeing at present, which is worse, I mean, which actually the Chinas and Indias of the world kind of fall into a middle or Russian camp, when that's not what we want. Russia would be a lot more isolated if global governance processes moved in the right direction. And I think G20 and other four should get us there, perhaps not fast enough, but I don't see any other way around. Otherwise, we'll constantly be talking about battlefield scenarios and security scenarios. So I'll stop there.
Do we have Carlos online as well? Are you ready to speak?
Yes. Are you listening to me?
Yes, we hear you. We did it before. We are back.
Sorry about my previous microphone. I had to switch. Let me just say one thing. I heard many very intelligent comments from almost everyone. I only have to put one point. Suppose that Putin wins, then the world that we will have will be unstable. Suppose that Putin loses, then possibly he will fall and we'll have an unstable world too. Suppose the war lasts for a long time. We'll have instability too. So I think that the fact that we are very much afraid of a clear outcome, which I, like most of you, I believe, will be a disastrous one, if there is no nuclear outcome, what can we do to ensure a path to recover stability? That is not being, that's not on the table. So there has to be some thinking about how do you bring stability back, being friend or no friends with Russia. I don't think that China has an interest, interest in instability. China has a Taiwan problem, and that Taiwan problem is related to the one belt, one road. Without Taiwan, China doesn't control the South China Sea. Without the control of the South China Sea, the one-belt-one road is incomplete. As long as the US has a foot there, from the Chinese point of view, they don't have a complete one-belt-one road, because a one-belt-one road is not only economical, it's also geopolitical, it's also military. So there is an issue there for China. But China can wait. Russia probably can't. Russia GDP and demography are going down. The alliance between Russia and China is possibly a short-term one, as was mentioned. Russia would be a minor player if it accepted China's partnership. So both are questions that have to be on the table. George Keenan said that it was a big mistake to enlarge NATO. He wasn't hurt. He's the guy who designed containment. I think that nowadays containment has to be restored some way, somehow, but not only does the West have to contain Russia, and maybe China too, but it also has to contain itself, has to recover time dominance. You cannot be pushed to decisions that you cannot make. So this is a time, and I think that President Biden is acting very correctly. It's a time for restraint, self-restraint. This is a time for being very, very careful. No one wants a nuclear war in Europe, that would escalate very easily to a world nuclear war. But on the other hand, imagine one thing. China is having problems with absorbing Hong Kong. Why? Because the Hong Kong mentality is different from the Chinese one. Hong Kong has lived under a British-style democracy for many decades. Imagine what would happen to Russia if they were successful. They would be absorbing forty million Ukrainians that have lived under a democratic rule for thirty years. And the Ukrainians are showing that they love that democracy. They are dying for it. Imagine with a population of a hundred and forty million people, absorbing forty million people more, that think differently. So there is a stability. It's not only a instability of war, it's not a one-step game. It's several steps that we have to look forward. So this is my, my opinion. And I repeat, I'm, I'm very sorry you couldn't hear when I first spoke, because you should have said this before. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. That's, that's a lot of food for thought. I think every panelist, all panelists had an opportunity to raise issues. We do have a little bit of time. Do we have a hand up? Mr. Joe Bo. Thank you. Thank you for staying. Thank you for staying, Dr. Joe. Go ahead, please.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Kudo. Because of my military background, I wasn't so much concerned with international order. But now I'm really involved in it, because given China's position in the world now, you have to consider about this issue. Right now, I was very attentive to the remarks of Mr. Kudanani, and I agree with a lot, a lot of things you said. Because you see, basically, I believe this kind of dichotomy, dichotomy of separating the world into democracy versus autocracy is totally wrong, because this actually would affect the Western democracies yourselves. Why? Because Western democracies have been inclined for sixteen years. And why is that? You, 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 I just read Freedom House. I cannot be convinced of why authoritarian states are so strong, so democracies have to be defined for sixteen years. So something's wrong with the method, with the methodology. So this is what I saw. If you look just now, you separate the world into Cold War period and the post-Cold War period. I like that. But my way of looking at this I like that. But my way of looking at this is just to think about this simply. How can the world, the, the world order be liberal international order from nineteen forty-five, when we have such major events that have shaped the world fundamentally? Like the independence of fifty-three African countries? Like the rivalry over Soviet-led Warsaw Bloc versus NATO? Like the movement of non-alignment? Like China's effective leadership in the center of the world? So the world is after nineteen forty-five is never liberal international order. Because there is only a short period, which is about fifteen years or so, that looks best like a liberal international order, that is after dissolution of the Soviet Union and before the full rise of China. Only that shorter period looks at the best like the liberal international order. Then what is the success of China the last forty years? It's not because of how able we are independently. It's just because we have learned from the West massively. Is this the success of hybridation? Because China during the Cultural Revolution have actually walked to the end of the tunnel. So once it turned back, then it's the right direction. The only question is, is how fast did the walk? So right now, China is so much integrated with the rest of the world. That is a good thing for everybody. But right now, we, in China, have a problem. We have been trying our best to be integrated to the world until Trump said, oh, this is great part of competition. So we're disappointed. So where shall we go? If you put yourself in China's shoes, where shall we go? So to conclude simply, I believe at any given time in history, the world is a combination of different culture, different civilization, different religions. There's no such things like a liberal international order. That is narcissism that will hurt yourself deeply, deeply. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This session has how many more minutes? Uh, we are already close to midnight, maybe in China likewise. We still have twenty-five minutes left, so let's continue to have discussions. So there are many points presented. And there are many possibilities of discussions, and it's also very interesting. The UN system, how do you look at the UN system? A lot of people have spoken about the UN Charter. For instance, sovereignty and also integrity of the territory, and also peaceful resolution of conflict. So a kind of a minimum. Kind of the concepts are being shared in order to sustain the international community. And I didn't have any coordination with Prime Minister Kishida, but then he used the words of foundation, the very foundation of the international order, the very foundation of the international order. Meaning that countries exist and then they have to be all respected. But that very foundation is under attack right now. And this is something that is, that has to be protected by all means. But what are the means to protect that? And how can we form such means going forward? So looking back on the discussions, whether you are ally or not, and unless there is an alliance, um, you can't protect the country under attack? Does it mean that all countries need to belong to any kind of alliance? I wonder. I don't doubt it. And another thing is, when I think about states, what about the people there in those countries? Those citizens, they feel anger? Or they have a certain common empathy that they share? That is actually crossing the borders across the world? So there is a very important element, whether you can share it or not, that is uh, uh, the problem about the fact being shared by many people or not. That is a kind of a problem emerging out of this Ukrainian war. If the facts are being explained in a different way, or if their press, press of freedom uh, is being controlled, what about the fact check? If there is misinformation, uh, people cannot make a correct judgment. And for that, we need to have a good democratic system in place, because that plays a very important role. So, um, the, um, disintegrating the foundation of the international order and in this division of the world, uh, we heading to the world where every country needs to belong to a kind of alliance? Or otherwise? Anybody would like to step in? Because that is our interest in Japan, and I think that is something to do with what Josh said. So we have remaining twenty minutes for that kind of discussion. Mr. Greco, please.
Yes, please. I, I'd like to make uh, some comments especially on a couple of fundamental points raised by, by Hans, which uh, so solicits, solicits me to make some reflection. I, I agree, of course, with you and the others, that the the West, Western countries, European countries, NATO countries have are responsible for many mistakes. I would just remember that after the fall of the wall and the collapse of Soviet Union, we appear to be aware that the, uh, this Russia should not be humiliated. And there was a need in a way or another, at some point, to give Russia a say on security affairs in Europe. This led a, a thing to the establishment of Russia NATO Council and also Russia's inclusion in the G seven, G eight. At the same time, the way in which both enlargements, but the enlargements from NATO and then maybe the process of integrating the other countries have been implemented was uh, for many, for many respects, ill, ill-conceived. Especially after, I think, if one look at the decision taken at Bucharest Summit, for instance, under the Bush administration, and the way in which the open door policy was pursued. Uh, with this promise to integrate the country at a certain point, Ukraine, that we were not able to defend, and as we've seen, we are not, uh, we, we, we are not declaring we will, we will defend. A second also, the eastern enlargement, the, the eastern uh, enlargement and the the, the, the open door towards the Ukraine and uh, on the part of the EU, and also Moldavia, Moldavia and others, and even Georgia, was also pursued without considering some implications. It was a policy driven mostly by such countries as Sweden and Poland, where a more balanced approach be, could have been more, more effective. That said, not just, just I would insist on one point. At this point in time, the problem is not uh, enlargement of NATO, not at all. The problem is at the moment, the territorial integrity of Ukraine and the survival of its democratic government. So all talk about the, what we can do in postponing NATO enlargement or neutralize Ukraine is not now the key point. So don't make confusion in this regard. Second point, I would say that this um, Cold War order became increasingly, post-Cold War order, became increasingly problematic for three elements, for three factors. The worst was the fall of a so, so, so big empire. See Soviet empire. We know how that this in always in the history is a, is a guide, always create big problems. And so we have to manage uh, this, this fall and these implications. And we were, as I just said, not so skillful in doing that. The second is that the, now we have clearly a revisionist power, a revengeist power, Russia, and so we have the problem of containing this, this revisionist drive on the part of Russia, because, because it's become a factor, it's a big, a main factor. Namely, rising of China. Hans is right in saying we could, we should have taken into account the need to adjust the situation while, for instance, also as Horton said, uh, making more concessions, relinquish more powers in sense. But at the same time, of course, there is the sense that the, there is the need for some containment. So this is also another challenge. These are the three factors uh, which are structural factors. They have put into question the stability of international order. Final point, I'm not so sure then the economic order is not at risk. I'm, in my view, it is a risk, especially because of the deepening technological competition and the way in which this is leading to more protectionist policies and the, of course, we need to, the need or the, the choice, the desire to defend uh, the strategic assets and, and also, and this is the second point, but it's closely related. The fact that we see, we are seeing now that security problems are impacting very heavily on economic operations. I, I think Ukrainian crisis is a clear proof of that. Thanks.
And thank you very much. And Mr. Anderson from Singapore.
Uh, thank you very much. I just want to make a couple of points. I think listening to the discussions throughout, I think there is a clear difference of several positions which, which I think underlies part of the problem facing, facing all of us today. I think on the, yes, the rules and regulations were made during the end of the Second World War. And therefore, it was very much a Western-oriented thing. But with decolonization and especially in the post-Cold War period, there you have a proliferation of states. There are now, I think, about hundred and ninety-three countries in the UN. And there wasn't even half that amount in nineteen forty-five. But I think one critical issue, and this is a point that's made by several people also, is that I think the West is mistaken, where they think that the entire world shares the same values that they do. In other words, that they think that there are universal values, but these are all defined by the Western liberal countries. But clearly now, when you have so many countries coming into the fore with different experiences, different cultures, different ways of seeing things, that other, there are other voices over there that wish to be heard. Now, the trouble is, if you take the attitude that you have universal values, then the, I, then the, the other position from that is that anyone that doesn't agree, subscribe to your values, then should be opposed, or should not have a say in how things should be done. And I think that is a problem, because that creates the issue then, that, you know, um, then you lead to a confrontational approach. But this I notice is also the, the traditional way that a lot of Western countries deal with things. In other words, even in the economic realm, you have a confrontational approach between management and workers. Whereas a different sort of approach is the way that Sanjoy talked about. The Asian way is a bit different. We don't look in terms of forming alliances targeted against someone. We tend to look at regional security structures that bring everybody together to exchange views, to build up trust and confidences, to have that opportunity to discuss matters privately, whether it's a bilateral or trilateral way, but also within a bigger grouping to exchange views. It doesn't always work, because like the EU, when you have too many members, then you have too many viewpoints and all that. But you have a situation whereby discussion, dialogue is the way to move forward. And this is very important, because you have many, many voices to take into account. And in this sense, we should realize that it's not a question about totally rewriting the rulebook. Because it's not. We have a, a rulebook that is tried and trusted and actually very good to follow. The problem is that you don't follow them. It's like when you look into many countries and you say, okay, there's so much corruption there. What they need is all the rules and regulations to combat corruption. But if you look closely, they actually have those rules in place. It's a question of enforcement. And that is the problem with the world. There is the UN Charter, which specifies what sort of behavior we want everyone to follow. And I stress the word, everyone. Big states, medium-sized states, small states. But when one, one or more people begin to think that they have, they are more equal than others, simply because either because they are stronger, because they are more powerful, or because they can flex their muscles and all, then the thing breaks down. It's not because that you don't have the rules there, it is because they are not being enforced. So that is why it is very clear why people oppose Russia's invasion. It's not about, oh, NATO was to blame because they caused all these things. And oh, yes, perhaps NATO expanded too fast or too much. But that doesn't justify the act of Russia invading a neighboring country or even carrying out acts to destabilize that country. So we, we should be clear about these sort of things. And we should be clear that if rules and regulations need changing because other people come in and they feel they should change, it should be done peacefully. And it should follow the sort of rules and regulations that are clearly spelt out already. They should recognize the sovereignty of countries, the political independence of countries, to be able to choose the sort of systems they want to run, the sort of people that they want to interact, but not to take policies where puts them or makes them a threat to their neighbors. And the question of territorial integrity is very important. Rules and regulations like this are there. But, you know, if you need to change certain things and all that, then it should be inclusive. So this idea about saying, trying to, to divide the world into two groups or push the Russians away because they don't subscribe to our values, no. I don't think so. They may not subscribe to the values, but they must subscribe to the idea because they are UN members, they should follow the UN Charter. That they also have a say in terms of changing rules and regulations, but in a peaceful manner. And this is crucial. Why? Because now, no matter how powerful you are, how strong you are, you cannot solve the problems of the world or your own problems. I'm talking here about transboundary issues, whether you talk about climate change or how are we going to find alternative supply chains? Or how do you address a global pandemic that will come and probably will be worse than COVID-19? How do you address these things if you don't sit down and talk to one another? And clearly, the very fact that, I think if you took a poll, most people would agree that if the, the handling of COVID-19 by all sides could have been done better if they were working together. So my point is that the rules and regulations are there, but they should be changed if necessary through peaceful means. And the assumption is that we are all different creatures. So we subscribe to certain values, yes, but do not assume that everybody thinks the same way. Thank you.
Hi. Thank you. So we are running out of time. So we are running out of time. So anyone, if you could make a brief statement, please go ahead. Anyone? So let me say a few things. So I would like to ask once again to Mr. Linze. And about the future international order, how do you predict the international order will be in the future? Or are we going into the direction of more division in the future?
As always, Kudosan, you asked the big, tough question. And here I will invoke the wisdom of a famed American philosopher, Yogi Berra. It's really hard to make predictions, especially about the future. And I think that is particularly the case right now. The Russian invasion of Ukraine is a potential hinge point in history. I take Hans's point earlier about there being a difference between the Cold War era and the post-Cold War order. We're on the cusp of potentially a new order. What that order is going to look like, I think, is to be determined. And it's going to be determined by the choices that major powers make. I'll just say specifically with Russia, given what is happening in Ukraine, given the courage, coverage that is given to it, it is hard to imagine how you bring Russia back in. I think this is a deep and bitter set of circumstances that is going to really color how Americans, how Europeans view issues. At the same time, you have the big issue of what are the choices that China is going to make? I take Rohinton's point that China has a lot at stake in the existing order. China, while it is not entirely happy with the existing, certainly economic order, seems to have always had a preference for stability over a disjuncture. But again, the Chinese have made a decision to side with the Russians, and that has created instability. And will China continue down that road in which it continues the strategic partnership without limits with Russia? If that happens, then I think it is going to be very difficult to find a way to patch the existing order back up. Likewise, the choices the United States is going to make. And again, you have the issue here. I think it's been alluded to several times now. Obviously, since the advent of Donald Trump, the consensus in the United States is about the issue of great power competition. This is clearly going to play into it. Now, I think the Biden administration with meetings such as the one that Jake Sullivan, the National Security Advisor, is either currently having or about to have, I believe in Rome, with his Chinese counterpart, shows that the Biden administration would very much hope to find a way to persuade China not to follow Russia down the path it is on. There's nothing, however, to indicate that China is rethinking the choices it has made. And throughout the conversation here today, there's been a lot of suggestions and a lot of assumptions that diplomacy and negotiation are valuable, that you need to see the world through the eyes of others that may not see it exactly the same way. Unfortunately, not all tasks can be solved by negotiation. Differing opinions don't have to come to agreement. There can be a fundamental break on that score. And it is lamentable, as several people have pointed out, that we're going to, or we run the risk of a broken world order at precisely the time when global cooperation is needed to address a number of transnational threats, most notably global climate change, but also pandemic and a variety of other issues. And I think that this current order has been shaken. And it's not at all clear to me it's going to be put back together quickly or anytime soon. And again, you know, I'll end where I began in my comments this morning. There's a lot of talks, certainly in the United States, certainly in Europe, about how remarkable it is that these countries have come together in a working shoulder to shoulder, in a consensus-based fashion on what to do. And that unity is impressive. The fact, again, that you are unified at the start of a crisis does not mean that you will be unified two, three, four, five, six years down the road. So I think this is, again, a pivot point or a hinge point in world history. And where we go is going to be decided by the choices that the leaders of key countries make. I wish I could say I'm optimistic they would choose wisely. But history has taught me that wisdom often escapes world leaders. To the extent even when they wish to choose differently, they feel confronted or constrained by their domestic politics and expectations placed upon them.
Thank you very much for your very excellent summary of discussions, I believe. But the, one thing to Mr. Linze. So the, to Rohinton. So the, do you think that the, now the, we are now moving into creating a stability, strategic, is a strategy, stability between the US and China? Mr. Linze, yes.
So could you just rephrase it, repeat the last part of the question?
So the strategic stability, because when we had the discussion with the Chinese counterparts, we did touch upon that. So between China and the US, strategic stability and the efforts, conversations needed for that. And that would be very important. And that's what we heard from some quarters. But yeah, because we now have this Russian question. So the discussion now is starting between China and the US on Russian issue. So the, is that part of the trial efforts in order to build the stability, strategic terms, a threat, stability between the US and China?
Well, I would put it this way, Kudosan. The Biden administration understands that China is a great power, that it has considerable influence over the evolution of the world order. However, the United States also believes, and I think this is, again, a fairly broadly held view, that the United States needs to contest certain choices that the Chinese government wishes to make. That it has many like-minded countries in Asia, but not only in Asia, who are, who share that point of view. And the Biden administration is hoping to provide or present a united front while also looking for ways to offer China some of what it wants. Again, you know, to get something, you have to give something. I don't think that fundamental rule of politics or of human nature is lost on anybody in the Biden administration. And again, I think the actions of the Biden team over the last month or so in trying to communicate to Russia by speaking directly to China speaks to that fundamental recognition on the part of the United States government that you need to deal with China. This is not going back to 1954 and refusing to shake hands with Chinese officials at international conferences and the like. Having said that, the choices China makes also matter. China has agency. China gets to choose. China has to decide what it wants. Chinese officials have to decide what they're willing to give up. And I will simply say that if the Chinese government sticks on the path it is currently on, in which it is going to back Vladimir Putin's war in Ukraine, then I think it is going to be very hard to find the common ground between Washington and Beijing. I think it's going to be very hard, even though I agree with Hans, to find ways to reform the existing order because lines will be drawn in the sand. Because there are certain principles that for the United States, and I don't think just for the United States, are non-negotiable. And that at some point, you have to stop, choose and make a stand. And I think we are in one such moment. Now, my hope is we will have smart diplomacy that will be able to keep this all contained. But again, this is also a very risky moment, as I alluded to earlier, just with the challenge of Russian military strikes right near the border with Poland. It is either through design or miscalculation, human error, we could end up going down a very different path than anybody, including the leaders in those capitals, wish to travel. It's a very dangerous time.
Thank you very much. So we have to wrap up. But we have two people who have raised their hand. So please be very brief. First of all, from Chatham House, Mr. Kundanani, and as well as Mr. Joe. Okay, so first with the Mr. Kundanani, and then followed by Mr. Joe. Please be brief.
Thank you, Kudosan. I'll try to be. I wish we did have more time because this is getting quite interesting now. And I wanted to, James, if I could just push you a little bit further on this question of some American agency and the choices that the United States faces. Because, you know, you're absolutely right, China faces choices too, Russia does as well. But, but it seems to me the US does too. And in a way, I think what you said, you know, I'm paraphrasing, but you know, felt to me as if you were saying the US is being pulled in these two different directions, which is very much how I see it. And I think it corresponds with, in a way, the, some of the fault lines and tensions in this concept of liberal international order that I was talking about. So it does seem to me as if there is a choice, which I wonder if now is becoming starker than it was before, between a sort of realist US foreign policy approach, you know, in support of a kind of a realist order, which would prioritize stability. And on the other hand, a sort of idealist or a liberal kind of approach that would, you know, deprioritize stability in a way and prioritize values or ideology. And I can think of, you know, even individuals in the Biden administration who I would kind of associate with either of those two kind of pulls. And I suppose my question is, in a way, you know, whether the US is going to be, you know, whether we'll just continue to try and balance those two tendencies, the idealist and the realist, whether it will be sort of forced to make a choice. And I think where it all kind of comes together is what you hinted at, which is, you know, I've been wondering about this since the Biden administration came to power. How can you do, you know, cooperation with China on climate change at the same time as you're doing what Biden calls extreme competition with China? And so, you know, as I say, you know, will the US be forced to choose here? Or am I misreading that?
Kudosan, you want me to respond? You're trying to bring it to the close.
Yes, please. Yes. Yes, Mr. Linze, yes, please.
I'll do this very quickly because it's a big question, as you know, Hans. I don't like the terms realism and idealism. I don't think they're very helpful for any of this. The reality is, is in life, you often have trade-offs. You want a variety of things, and you can't get them all at an acceptable price. So you're going to have to make choices. And I think that is going to be the issue for the Biden team going on. Now, while I think they have done a very good job in handling the lead-up to Ukraine and the follow Russian invasion, that doesn't mean they will continue to make wise choices. It also doesn't mean that all the other foreign policy choices or lack of choices they have made have been particularly good. We didn't get a chance to discuss what you meant by reform of the liberal order. But there are obviously a number of problems in the economic realm, or Hinton knows this quite well, where a Biden administration might have been able to work with like-minded allies to do some very smart things. Instead, they have sort of tangled themselves up in a slogan called "A Foreign Policy for Middle Class", the content of which I have no idea what it means. But in essence, there's just been more drift rather than bold action that would, I think, actually diminish differences and irritations with other countries, including our allies, but not just with our allies. It would also serve America's own interests. But we're not here yet, and we may not get there. Leaving this last point, again, we talk about order, we're talking about decisions countries make. But, you know, at least here in the United States, you have elections, leaders change. Different leaders will make very different choices. Just listen to the speech that former President Donald Trump gave in South Carolina over the weekend. So if you were to see Donald Trump return to the Oval Office or someone like Trump in January of 2025, you're going to go down a very different path of history.
So Mr. Joe?
Yeah.
So ending with Mr. Joe, perhaps?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Kudo. Because you just now mentioned about the strategic stability between China and the US. So I feel obliged to say a few words on this issue. Strategic stability, narrowly speaking, means about the balance between nuclear weapons. And broadly speaking, means how to avoid the arms race. So if we talk about the balance of nuclear weapons, China, China's nuclear weapon cannot balance that with the United States. So the only way out is either for China to drastically increase its nuclear weapon to reach a level of the United States, or the United States reduce its nuclear weapon to the level of China. None of this is possible. So the only way out, I believe currently, that is a very realistic, good way out, is we talk about no first use of nuclear weapons, especially given that Mr. Putin threatened to use nuclear weapon. So now we could talk about no first use of nuclear weapon. And that is very much relevant to Mr. Biden's policy because he actually has mentioned about nuclear weapons use is primarily deterrence. So his policy is most is very close to China's no-first use of nuclear weapon. And that is understood because he was siding with President Obama, speaking of free world. The only worry is the worries from allies. Allies were afraid that in this way, the United States would give up the nuclear weapon, nuclear arms. So why should the allies worry? Because one attack, one ally is an attack on all countries. Is this not possible? And then how about DPRK? Then, because the whole Kremlin is not very big. So if DPRK use nuclear weapons, that's committing suicide. That means they cannot use it. So let me stop here. So I finally have made the proposal.
We did have a Chinese panelist wrap up the session. I don't know how the discussion evolved this way. I really appreciate that Mr. Joe stayed until the very end despite the theme of this session. The crux of the international order or the foundation of the international order may be collapsing. I do feel that is evolving. And together with the action in Ukraine, this is a phenomenon that is ongoing. I don't think anyone would appreciate the collapse of an international order. And so, which leads to unprecedented sanctions coming out because of the Ukrainian crisis may not be, may not be sustainable. But I do believe that we all need to take this matter seriously. So at the minimum, there has to be rules of, minimum rules of coexistence as part of the international order. And this can be developed in many directions, not to impose Western, purely Western.
purely Western ideals, but also to engender diversity as well. What I would like to see is peace. And in other words, conflict resolution through peaceful means, respect for territory, therefore, no aggression or no unilateral dominance of another territory. Standards set of rules to that end must be laid out. Otherwise, the current order is so fragile, it could break any minute. The Tokyo Conference this year coincided with so many changes. And in the past, it's been so as well. But that perspective remains unchanged. Japan is an ally of the United States, but very close neighbor of China. We engage in active dialogue with China as well. And going forward, we would like to engage in, engage with a European colleagues in a dialogue session, hopefully next year as well. And there are limits, obviously, to the online format. So we need to meet and talk and dine as well, all together. Thank you for your attention. Thank you for your kind attention. It's been four hours. Thank you for working with us for so long, engaging with us for so long. Our deepest appreciation to the representatives of think tanks from ten countries. And thank you to the Chinese panelists for staying with us till the end. This is the fifth Tokyo Conference 2022. We had several hundred viewers, by the way, joining in this webinar. And some of the panelists will join us again tomorrow and the day after tomorrow. Tomorrow and day after tomorrow, the focus would be on the global economy, international order destabilizing, a fluid globalization, its future and policy coordination, a topic to address over two days, starting at 7:00 PM Japan time. And to those panelists who attended, we welcome once again tomorrow, Mr. Joshi from India ORF, who will be the emcee. Session two, we welcome Mr. Greco from Italy as the moderator as well. On the 16th day, day after tomorrow, the last session, we're happy to welcome Mr. Carlos Ivaliav in session four. We look forward to seeing you again tomorrow and day after tomorrow. We have 400 observers. Please make sure that your web connections are stable. And also, please recheck your microphone, test your microphone ahead of time. I would like to, we would like to ask Carlos to stay behind after the session so we can test your equipment together, if you don't mind. And with that note, the Tokyo Conference 2022 comes to a close. And next year, we hope that it's in real Tokyo that the conference would be held. Thank you for your participation.
Thank you so much.